That was a false alarm there, sorry. I didn't mean to get everybody excited too early. I'd like to call this November 1st meeting of the Cookeville City Council to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Anderson.
Present.
Councilman Shelton.
Here.
Mayor Salee.
Present.
Vice Mayor Davis.
Present.
Councilman Williams.
Present.
All present.
We could all rise for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Thank you. Do we have any additions to the agenda tonight or corrections?
We have one change. We need to withdraw item 11.
11. Any other changes?
No changes.
Seeing, uh, no further changes. All those in favor, do we have a motion and a second?
Some move.
Have our motion and our second. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Brings us to our, our screen's awful dark tonight up there. Uh, brings us to our consent agenda, item two. Uh, setting a date for a public hearing on 12/6/07 at 6:00 PM on ordinance 0711133, rezoning properties along Woodson Avenue between Hudson Street and East Stevens Street from RS 5 to RS 10. Setting a date on 12/6/07 at 6:00 PM for a public hearing on ordinance 071134, comprehensive rezoning along North Washington Avenue and 10th Street from CL Local Commercial to CN Neighborhood Commercial. Item four, setting a date 12/6/07 at 6:00 PM for a public hearing, ordinance 071135, rezoning properties located at East 10th Street and Fisk Road from CL Local Commercial and RS 10 Single Family to CN Neighborhood Commercial. And item five, consider awarding bids for Transformers, luminaires, and wood poles, electric department. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
Have our motion and our second. Uh, any discussion or comments from the council? Seeing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. That brings us to item six in our old business section of our meeting. Item six is to consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on October the 18th, 2007. Do we have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Um, any discussion by the council? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item seven, consider on second and final reading, ordinance 071027, amending the Cookeville zoning code pertaining to Section 220 CN Neighborhood Commercial for the purpose of increasing the maximum square footage of developments from 10,000 to 15,000 square feet of total floor space. Sponsor Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, um, let me take just a second, turn that light off over there on that. Let me just turn the rest of them back on, it probably won't help much. Uh, the amendment proposed in this ordinance is intended to make the CN zoning more appropriate for larger areas in the city and to reduce the number of developments that would be made non-conforming in future areas that may be rezoned from heavier commercial districts. The proposed amendment has been approved by the Planning Commission, as recommended by the Planning Department, and we've received no calls or comments since first reading.
Do we have a motion and a second?
Need approval.
Second.
Have our motion and our second for approval. Do we have any comments from the council? Any comments from the audience? Yes, sir. If you could approach the lectern there and identify yourself.
My name is Russell Sinti, and I have previously written to all of you about rezoning. And there are just a few things I would like to put out.
Sir, this-
Going from a maximum of 10,000 to 15,000 without any regard to what size of lot you're putting in, to me seems to be a little, uh, wrong. As a, as an example, just an example, we propose Walgreens, which is going in on Washington and 10th. Uh, that, that building occupies, according to their plans, 28% of the property. At that 28% level, you have to restrict the boundary areas in the back from 30 feet down to 10 feet. Even doing that, there's not enough parking spaces in that, in that area for the zoning. And on top of that, they've even left out the van parking spot, which is required by federal law. So it just seems that by, by making it without, without any restrictions due to the property size, what you're doing is you're pushing all this stuff onto the zoning board and the zoning board of appeals to make sure that the property fits. If you did it upfront in this ordinance, it would ease the load on the zoning property and the zoning board of appeals, and it would make sure that when you do put a commercial building on a plot that's, that's on zone CN, that the building fits, that it fits in with the neighborhood, that it complies with, roughly complies with all of the zoning requirements. And it, and it just seems that it would make a lot better deal. And this is not just about this area, this, this one plot land. It's just an example that I use. Consider all the other areas that would be done, uh, under CN. I mean, the zoning board of appeals could be going through hundreds of these, these appeals in order to get large buildings on the small plots. If you gave it some sort of percentage, and I recommend it 20% for 100,000 or whatever, 28% to me seems to be way too rough if you go by this top line. Make it at some percentage. Make it, make it so that the building size has to conform to the size of the lot that you're doing. And it just seems to me as though it'd be a much bigger deal. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments.
James, would you like to clarify, I think, uh, does each zone has its own setback requirements? Not only as far as front, side, and rear setbacks, and those determine what buildable area is there in each of our zones? Is that not correct?
Well, that helps to determine. That's part of the determining factor. A lot of it has to do with the design of the building, the use, which, that helps determine the number of parking spaces, and also we do have, and all zone does have, a maximum buildable area that's allowed on each lot. The size of the, of the building, um, is going to be determined a great deal of all those factors, plus the size of your property. Because we say 15,000 doesn't mean everybody's going to try to put a 15,000 square foot building in, that's the maximum. The site plan they're referring to is just for illustration purposes. It's not a site plan that's been submitted to the city for approval. It was done just for illustration purposes for, uh, to provide the planning commission, council, and the resident scenario of an example of how they like to see the property develop. It doesn't conform with all the requirements of the code. They will have to comply, or they will have to get variances. But I don't see how increasing the, the maximum square footage is going to increase the amount of, of variances that are going to be required. That's going to depend on each situation. I mean, you could use the same example if we went from, from 5,000 to 10,000, or 15 to 20. I don't think that matters. It's, it matters that, you know, all the same setback requirements, parking requirements, landscaping requirements still apply. They still have to meet with those, and those go a long ways into dictating how big of a building you can put on there. Now, the square footage requirement also applies to whether it's one, two, or three, you know, multiple stories. It's the total square footage of the development. So there's a lot of different factors that go into that. But bottom line is, they do have to comply with the code.
Any further comments from the council? Any additional comments from the audience? Yes, sir.
When I speak about it, um, with the national league on block on Allen Avenue behind the proposed Walgreens, was that correct in, in hearing total development?
Yes, yes.
So the conceptual plan of 15,000 plus the, for Walgreens plus the 35,000 exceed 15,000?
Okay, that's correct if it's one lot. Properties can be so divided, it's per lot, per tract, per development. So if the property's so divided, you'd have two separate tracts that couldn't exceed 15,000 square feet and not-
Seems to me this is very much spot right.
Thank you.
Of course, we're not considering the zone right now, we're looking at the CN.
Right. Any additional comments from the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Item eight, consider on second and final reading, ordinance 071028, rezoning 900 North Washington Avenue from RS 10 Single Family Residential to CN Neighborhood Commercial and 990 North Washington Avenue from CL Local Commercial to CN Neighborhood Commercial. Sponsor Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, um, we have on the screen the area that's been considered for rezoning, location map and the current zoning. The proposed rezoning has been approved by the Planning Commission, as recommended by the Planning Department. The Planning Department did receive a petition today in opposition to the rezoning, and I was asked to present it to you, which I will.
Same one.
Is it same one?
I was asked to make sure I presented it to you tonight. This is second and final reading on this ordinance.
Do we have a, uh, motion and a second already on the table? I don't think we do. Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
Some move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Uh, open up the floor for the council to discuss. Any comments? We'll pass the petition down just shortly here. We appreciate you bringing that to us, James. Any comments from the audience?
We, uh, my mother couldn't figure out, so we all, uh, went around. Um, it was a broken family, it was packed, and my mother was a good, uh, breaking back. And, uh, the reason we're opposed to this is various, certain reasons, but it comes down to three points. One, uh, it was my grandmother's intent when this property, uh, that's coming under consideration for rezoning, uh, because my grandmother wished to protect the integrity of the lot on its east side of Allen, that it's worth this proposed development, to remain that way and channel, uh, into partnership with the current owners. My family's so, uh, part of that, uh, lot with the understanding, our understanding, that it would remain residential, since that has, you know, with this proposed change. So that's the first reason. The second reason is not so important with the elevation, with the, um, current zoning for a lot, setbacks, etc., um, it's a vacant lot, so the building envelope would be smaller and would probably require, perhaps for it to be built on it, wouldn't require a piece of weight structure. Line of sight from the living areas of that structure would be directly onto this proposed building, especially without the adequate setbacks and screen that is, um, set in the code, through the code. My experience with zoning, etc., is basically a conceptualized plan has to meet the current zone, so I think this is pretty mature in that. The developers have had a chance to, um, attempt to submit a conceptual plan that would adhere to the zoning that is currently required. They have not changed the plan to mind the same, much at all. Um, there was a, I think the biggest, um, question about this development basically has been the traffic increases that it might have, etc. I know a full traffic building is not completed, but, um, they did move, uh, the interest to Robinson site to allow for that. Now, it's not taking too much of a week. I think it's pretty mature.
If you, if you could just, we'll, we'll go ahead and allow you a little more time to finish, but if you could just be brief would be-
I'm, I'm trying.
Oh, yeah, that's fine. Thank you, take, just take your time.
Um, the, again, to the right side, when you start looking at all of the Walgreens structures in, in the area, in the region, uh, I know it's rather, it's, uh, the, um, it would be more like the brickwood sort of concept. The thought of you from Washington and from 10th does have a nice appeal, but what the residents are going to see without adequate screen is going to be a raised and heated front door, so to hit me, I submitted to the planning commission pictures of Walgreens in the area, uh, you're going to have satellites to be able to get some thoughts, etc. So there is no concern apparently to the rear of what the residents, long-term residents, have in the city. So those are, those are my concerns, and that's why we're talking.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. If we could check on our microphone up there, Rick? Thank you. Uh, any further comments, um, from the audience? Or comments from the council?
Well, here again, I, I think we said this before when we, on first reading, but here again, this council is not here to decide whether it's a Walgreens, whether it's a bank, whether it's a library, whether, what, what it is. We are, we are talking about rezoning. There are other steps that, that this, these developers will, will be going through. So, um, it is not our place to determine whether Walgreens comes to this community or not. But we're just talking about the, the property itself. So I just wanted to clarify that again for those in the audience who might not have understood last time when we were talking about that.
And I, I think, um, Vice Mayor Davis made a really good comment at the last meeting that, you know, and I, the comments together, I think, justified that, you know, this, this location is geographically at a major intersection on a state highway. And today, we have an opportunity to do a type of zoning that is much more restrictive than the type of zoning that is currently all around that area, the CL. I don't think any of the planning commission, uh, can't, uh, and I don't think the council felt very comfortable in approaching into that residential area with more CL. And that we have the opportunity today, because that, where that lot is located geographically, at some point, whether it be today, or five years, or 10 years, or some point in the future, more than likely is going to be developed. And we, we've talked about that. And so today, we have a way to set in place some zoning that will be much more restrictive and much more protective of that residential area. And I think that's the intent that all of us have. And again, it's, it's not, as the vice mayor has stated, it's not for any one particular development. We, we don't, can't look at that. And it, uh, there's a lot of issues that we have to remove ourselves from, uh, like the, the issue of the trees we talked about last time. I think we're all very sensitive to that, but we, we can't, um, it's private property, and people have the ability to take down their trees if they, if they so wish. And I certainly would encourage you not to. It takes a long time for a tree to go from the size of a pencil to a 6, 8, 12-inch diameter. It takes a lifetime. And it's, it's very hard to get, you know, most of us, uh, won't live that long if we, if we plant trees today. So it is important to us, but we can't restrict somebody's private property in what they do. And it's, you know, I, it, it is, it's not been an easy decision. And I really think that in the long run, that this will be a more, more restrictive zoning that will protect this area. And I think that, you know, personally, that, that we are doing a proactive approach to what's inevitably going to happen, which is that that area of town is going to develop.
Well, and as we pointed out at the last council meeting, this CN, um, is much more restrictive than residential. If somebody wanted to go in there and develop it with family homes, my understanding is, is that they could go to the ground and not, there's no landscaping requirements on single-family, or is there?
No, you're correct.
And so what, what we have to look at, as the mayor just pointed out, is what we can do right now. I'm here right now. I have no idea, and none of us do, who's coming at the next election. So I feel like this is the most protection that we can do right now. And I'd much rather it be CN than even single-family that would come in and perhaps take down every single tree and not put back the landscaping. And it's hard, like Mayor Salee says, it's hard to make decisions like that, but, you know, we have to do what we think is best for now and the future.
Yes, ma'am. Just come over to this one.
Say your name, please.
Yeah, you may want to come over here to this one, this side. Well, no, we, for, for the public record-
Television.
It's for the television.
All the viewers at home, we need you to-
It's going to be on TV now.
I'm Nancy Forrester. My concern about the CN is there is no restriction on the business hours. And as a neighbor in that neighborhood, I don't want a 24-hour business. And that is not neighborhood-friendly. And I talked to James Mills about that today, and he said that I would have to go to the planning commission to get it changed, which means probably four months before it would happen. And in that four months, we may have a 24-hour business, two doors down from me.
Let me, uh, let me make a comment to that. It may be, one of the things that we look at when we did this, the comment was made, that it doesn't look like that we've given much concern. The reason why we're discussing CN today is because there has been much concern going into this project. Originally, it was requested that this be a CL zone. And we've looked at not only this property, but other pieces of property, because the concern is great. Not only for the property owners on Allen or on 9th, but every property owner that borders these commercial properties on 10th Street. As it relates to this specific property and the hours of operation, we love that you're here. I mean, we hate that it's here and you're frustrated today, but I would encourage you, if you have a concern, there's a lot of other properties that we're going to rezone here to CN. Don't give up on it. You're more than welcome to come and petition James after today. It may be that this corner ends up being a 24-hour location, but all the undeveloped property that we're, that we're concerned about and giving architectural controls to, which is never, is the only zone which can happen. In this case, the developer has agreed to make provisions for making all four sides look good. I think our concern has gone the extra mile, not only for people on 9th Street, but everyone that lives in this side of town. And so I would encourage you to go ahead and do that. It's not something that, that we can determine at a council meeting like this, but it's something that we can study as a planning commission, and, and I would encourage you to do that. It may be too late for this corner, this Walgreens, but there's some other things there as well.
I know, but you went from the 10,000 to the 15 square feet in less than four months. I mean, they just presented that last month.
Right. And unfortunately, the, in, in the cases related to this, the change to go from, and, James, you can correct me if I'm wrong, because I don't want to speak on your behalf, but my understanding, the reason why the 10,000 to 15,000 went was to encourage more growth in these undeveloped properties that we were considering rezoning. And the 10,000, 10,000 to 15,000 square foot requirement means per tract. So, uh, the undeveloped property across the street could literally be divided into five or six tracts and have 15,000 square feet on each one. Is that correct, James?
Yes.
I mean, if the area was large enough for them to do it. But I don't, I don't know what the process is for that, but at the planning commission, it was brought up at that point. And the council, council meeting is not the point in order, time in order to do that, is my understanding. So, once again, I'd encourage you to, to bring that up at the planning commission meeting or, or petition James. I've gotten a lot of, uh, letters this week, and I, I think that we want to encourage you to continue to do that.
If you want me to clarify the process, what she's referring to is amending the, the zoning code text to insert specific requirements that the hours of operations of businesses in the CN district be limited, um, to certain hours. Um, that's, an amendment to the zoning code is, is the same process as, as a, as a rezoning. And that typically takes about four months. We want to consult our attorney about provisions like that, but, uh, you know, that is something that could be considered. And typically, requests for zoning code amendments are submitted by property owners, or they can be initiated by the city. But the process is the same, basically in timeframe as rezoning, which is normally about four months.
Any further comments from the audience? Any further comments from the council?
I wasn't going to say anything, but, uh, Mona Copeland, again. My, my concern has only been about the traffic, and, you know, there was an accident, a three-car accident Sunday, um, on Washington and 10th. And I believe it was rocky. And my question would be, Mr. Mills, do you know why that there was an accident there? Do you have the traffic report on that? Was it emerging issue?
I have no idea, but there was an accident there.
Sunday.
I'm their police chief, may, but I don't have any information on that. Police chief doesn't either.
My husband was outside. There was two people, I understand from his taze, that they were handcuffed. So I, it happened Sunday afternoon, and he was outside and saw it, so. Anyway, my concern would be, maybe Scott didn't know what he saw.
I don't think, I don't think anyone's saying that they, that you or your husband didn't see it.
No, I wasn't there. I wasn't there. I was just concerned, I'm talking about-
Just to clarify what he said, I think what he was saying is that he was unaware of it. As it relates to the, the accident, I think that's what they're saying. The accident may have occurred, but they're unaware of the details or have not received the accident report.
Well, my main thing is, is, and y'all have really worked very hard on everything, and I, and I appreciate it on the, the traffic issues. But have y'all thought anymore about, you know, I know 10th crosses a highway. The merging is an issue. I think that's where there, there's so much traffic, and those are, are real concerns with people honking at each other continuously during the day, because they are, they're trying to push the accelerator to beat the other person when they take a left. And you remember, I, I did say that I felt like that's going to cause a major accident. Is, you're crossing a state highway, I understand that, but on 10th Street, can you not just, is there any jurisdiction to where maybe Mr. Mills can just make one lane to turn left on Wash- on Washington so that you don't have that merging issue? Because you have two lanes that merge in front of that property and quickly in front of Mr. Martin's house, they're having to go into one lane. And that's where all this traffic congestion is. Anyway, that, that's my question. I don't know whose jurisdiction that is. Is it the state's or is it the city's with, with those traffic concerns? And I know I did bring that up before, and have y'all thought anymore about that? Because there's six lanes on 10th Street, right there on that mouth that open up to Washington, that you can take two that take a left. So anyway, that's, that's all I wanted to know, and I, if y'all can work on that, thank you.
I think you told us, Mr. Lutzenhouser, and on the planning commission, who is a traffic expert, didn't, didn't you give us a report, some of the things that he's about? They didn't find traffic accidents any higher there than, there was something that he?
I don't think there were any traffic accidents.
There was one.
There was one in the last year and a half, because that was as a result of the merging system. We looked, and Greg and I looked at 10th Street, and there are two lanes that turn left, but, and we looked at the possibility, of course, this was, this decision would have to be made by the state. Let me clarify that to begin with. All this is, was developed by the state. I'm, I'm sure they would listen to our input, but if you look at that during the high-traffic times, those two lanes are currently stacked to make the left-hand turn. If you make that a straight-through lane, what you're going to do is causing a major, even more of a traffic jam on 10th Street with all the traffic backing up, waiting to turn left. Uh, I know it does, and I agree, it creates a problem with the merging system there on Washington. We've got that in several places in the city. And that's a, to my knowledge, it's basically a T-DOT design, but there aren't, have so far unless this accident Sunday, there's been relatively few, um, accidents created by that merging system. What Dr. Lutzenhouser looked at was the entrance to this property that's based on that preliminary site plan. Now, again, I want to stress that site plan has not been approved by the city. But based on their preliminary site plan, it was his opinion that by moving the entrance further south from where the current entrance is to the citizens' bank, you would actually have a safer situation than currently exists. That was his opinion, um, regarding that, the merging system there.
Has it, to, I came through that intersection recently. Uh, our, uh, Public Works Director wasn't at the last meeting to ask this question, but when you have those two lanes turning left, would it not be possible to dedicate the right-hand lane to be exited only onto Ninth Street once you make that turn and hatch off, uh, Washington to where, if you're going south on Washington, that the right-hand lane of the, of the merge is basically forced to Ninth Street? So that when you stack up in those two lanes on 10th, you know if you're in that right lane, that you're going to eventually wind up on Ninth Street?
Well, with most of the traffic, and I'll let Greg speak on this just a second, but with most of the traffic going south with, I, I would believe their primary intention is to head further south, lots cut across, by making it a dedicated right-hand turn lane, and we looked at this and talked about that, you're still going to have the merging issue, you're just going to have a much shorter territory for that merging issue to, to occur and probably be much more unsafe. Because you'll have them force themselves over really quick so they don't have to turn right-hand, or you'll have them stop there, waiting to merge with other traffic coming behind them. So, yeah, I mean, it's not an ideal situation, but the, our engineers, and Greg, you can speak on this, don't believe that the level of development that can occur on this property is going to have substantial traffic impact.
If, if this were left residential, how many houses could be built on that?
Approximately four to five. There's 1.9 acres, um, if you, you know, I'm not, you've got the corner where the bank is, you leave out, so you have about, uh, 1.9 acres at RS10 with 100-foot wide lots, approximately five.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with you, Mona, about the, the, the lane, but can you imagine if four or five houses were built here and you had people trying to back out or, you know, come out of those driveways, at least with this, with some type of development? If we plan it properly, hopefully, the entrance to whatever this is can be, as Dr. Lutzenhouser said, further south so as to, to, to help with that situation and not cause a, a more of a, a, a bad situation. That would.
Maybe be one driveway rather than five.
Well, we can require that through site plan review, and I'm pretty certain that it will be the intention, and I'm pretty sure that T-DOT and, and Public Works will do what they can to ensure that that's what happens.
Now, the bottom line is, this community is growing. We cannot stop the growth, and we'll have these situations happen across the city from time to time, and we, it's good that we are trying to talk and work it out and think of all possibilities that we could use. So, um, I, I think we've, we've come to about the best possibility that we know in, in this situation for this piece of property.
Any further?
That's, that's a very good opinion. I think we're all trying to work towards the best compromise between the residential and commercial growth of our city, and it's, we're, we're not unique. Uh, I think most cities are, are feeling this pains as well, so, um, any, any further comments by the council? Any additional comments by the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate, but saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Uh, that brings us to the new business, uh, portion of our meeting, item nine. Hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance 071029, rezoning 28, 38, 48, and a vacant lot on East Borden Street and 383, 389, and 395 Highland Avenue from RM8 multifamily residential to CL local commercial sponsor Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, this ordinance rezones, or would rezon, six parcels in their entirety and a portion of one other. And as you stated, they're located on East Borden Street and Highland Avenue. Here's the general location. Here's an aerial view of the properties being considered. These seven properties, including adjacent right-of-way, comprise approximately 3.3 acres. The area, uh, is contiguous with CL zoning to the east, with CI commercial industrial mixed-use zoning to the south, with RM8 zoning to the west and the north. Phoenix USA occupies the entire block along the south side of Borden Street, which is all this track through here. The proposed rezoning was initiated by the owner of the property at 38 East Borden Street, and the owners of the other six parcels are also in favor of the rezoning. Uh, Phoenix USA is the owner of three of these tracks. As you can see, uh, from the aerial photograph, they already have a large portion of this area's parking for this, uh, their current operation. The future land use plan identifies as areas being best suited for commercial and mixed-density residential use. Rezoning of the seven properties to CL would appear to provide an appropriate transitional area between the industrial development to the south and the mixed-density residential development to the north. The rezoning has been approved by the planning commission, as recommended by the planning department.
Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
No.
Have our motion and our second. Any discussion by the council?
I have one quick question, uh, the, why would we not go ahead and try to, um, the last parcel on the west? Why not just go ahead and run the CL all the way out to, um?
That's a good question, and the reason is, is that we don't want to encourage further commercial development along a Walnut. We believe if we do go that far, then there's not going to be any reason to keep going up Walnut. That's still primarily a, a established, single-family area that we'd like to preserve. This area has been in transition. Um, that is a good, a good question. Let me say then one other thing that, that I would anticipate, after we looked at this and after we've gone through all the other things we have on CN, that this may be an area that we want to come back and look at as CN. Um, but we would need to do much more study. I do think CL is appropriate, but when you look at a, a further area up through here, and that's one of the, some of the areas we talked about looking at CN, we're around the downtown, so this has a lot of those same characteristics, but at the time this went through, uh, we hadn't made the changes and, anyway. Right now, we're recommending CL. I just wanted to let you know that, so you're not surprised, at some point in the future, we may look at a whole large area here that would include this as CN.
But if, if that property owner of that piece he's referring to came and requested that, I mean, we would almost, how could you not?
Well, I think there's press, I think there's, there's justification for not doing it, because if, it's same token, if we do that one, then, and then we really wouldn't have any justification for not doing that one, and you can work your way on up there. And you have to pick a stopping point somewhere to try to preserve that, and that's what we tried to do here. I mean, that's, there's some, there's some, uh, that does make sense to a certain point, that you've got to, you've got to stop somewhere. And, and our intent there, I think, was again, to try not, because we've had, on either end of this, requests in the past to go commercial, and we're, we're afraid that eventually we'll have that whole section in there. And I, right now, that's not a goal of the city for that area to change.
Is there, is there an intended building, or is there an intended development for this property?
Not that we're aware of, no.
I mean, is there?
The, the reason that was given by the original, uh, petition was basically to increase market, uh, market, uh, where he could get on the market. The speculative rezoning was the.
Well, and I think also he'd made a, I think it was a daycare before, he'd made a, a pretty sizable investment into a parking lot and, uh.
That's true.
And in the front parking.
Could convert it back to single-family and wants to be able to sell it for office space.
Any further comments from the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate, but saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Item 10, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance 071030, rezoning a portion of 777 South Willow Avenue from RS5 plus your single-family residential to CG general commercial and RS15 single-family residential sponsor Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, this is the location of the property. The ordinance would rezon a portion of the Heavenly Host Lutheran Church property, which is, you stated, Mayor's, at 777 South Willow Avenue. Here's an aerial view, and it's broken into two sections, and I'll explain that in just a second. Here's the current zoning. The proposed rezoning was initiated by Mr. Johnny Stotts of J&amp;S Construction on behalf of the church. The zoning of the church property is currently split with the majority zoned as CG, and the western portion, which consists of approximately 1.9 acres, zoned as RS5 single-family residential. The request submitted to the planning commission was to rezone an estimated 1.4 acres of the property to CG, which would have left a small strip approximately 100 feet in depth, consisting of just under a half acre, uh, zoned as RS5. So, the original request was for this section, this 254 feet approximately, to go to CG. In March of this year, the portion of the church's property now zoned as RS5 was approved for rezoning from RS10. So just last March, this section of property was RS10. When this previous rezoning was approved by the council, a proposed residential development plan was submitted. The plan indicated that the portion of the property rezoned to RS5 would be developed as single-family dwelling lots, and this is the plan that, that was looked at, um, several months ago. When this request was submitted, a revised site plan depicting on, depicting how it would be developed under CG was not submitted. We'll go back to the zoning map. The petitioner indicated in the rezoning application that the church was requesting the movement of the current CG line back to line up with the new CG line submitted by the county executive of Putnam County. This is in reference to the contiguous property to the north, to this track, a portion of which was rezoned to CG earlier this year for the location of county facilities, including the E911 Center and the Health Department. The CG zoning line on this contiguous property to the north extends 100 feet from the western property, which is assigned as requested by the petitioner. The 100-foot strip of the contiguous property not zoned as CG is zoned as RS10 single-family residential, whereas in this original request, there would be a 100-foot strip zoned as RS5. Also, in the rezoning of the contiguous northern property, the county committed to the portion of the property that would remain as RS10 to not being developed and remaining in perpetuity as a landscape buffer area to protect the residential area to the west. The planning commission was of the opinion that while perhaps there was some precedent created with the rezoning of the contiguous property to the north, the rezoning that was requested by the church would not provide the same protection for the adjacent RS15 area to the west with a portion of it staying as RS5. To provide some assurance that any development by the church would have minimal impact on the adjacent residential area, the planning commission recommended that the requested CG rezoning be approved, provided that the 100-foot western strip be rezoned to RS15 the same as the adjacent residential area. And the planning department concurred with this recommendation. So, this, this rezoning would rezon this section to CG and this back 100-foot section to RS15, which is the same zone as this contiguous property. And the planning commission and the planning department believe with that zoning, it will be so, it will severely limit how, if this property can be developed at all, and if it could, you're only looking at a, a maximum of one house being located in there.
Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
No. Second.
I have our motion and our second. Any discussion by the council?
The, the strip from the county property was also left as RS?
It's RS10. So this is a lower-density zone than was actually left by the county property. The planning commission felt like, of course, we couldn't require that there be any kind of commitment, uh, but since we couldn't, the next best thing was to put as high, excuse me, as low a density as we could on this property to better, to protect the adjoining areas.
Any further comments or questions by the council?
I'll be abstaining from this vote.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments? Comments from the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate, but saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Four yes votes, one abstain, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills.
Thank you.
Uh, it brings us to item 12. Consider, um, resolution 071118, authorizing the city attorney to commence eminent domain proceedings jointly with Putnam County relative to the interlocal agreement to purchase land to develop a mixed-use business park. Sponsor, Mr. Jim Shipley.
Mayor and council, uh, in July of 2006, the city and county entered, entered into an agreement to purchase land and develop a mixed-use, uh, business park. And all of the land purchases have been completed except for a one-fifth interest in one track. And this resolution, which will also be presented to the county, uh, will authorize those two governments to acquire that one-fifth interest by eminent domain. And I would recommend your approval.
Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
No. Second.
I have our motion and our second. Uh, discussion by the council. Seeing none, do we have any comments from the audience?
Uh, my name is Linda Owens, and this is, I'm speaking for my mother, Dr. Fay Piles-Lynch. Um, this is the property that was left to her by her parents. I, um, spoke with you, I think, December 7th of, uh, last year, 2006, and, uh, informed you then that I realized that there were some negotiations going on with my family members, uh, with the city and the county to purchase the land, uh, but that my mother was not part of that, those negotiations, and that she was not interested in selling. Um, December 31st of last year, uh, the four parties did sell, uh, four other heirs did sell, uh, and my mother did not, uh, which I think the city bought two of, or paid the checks, as it was written on the tax map, uh, to two of the heirs and the county to two of the heirs, uh, which left the city with 40% undivided interest, the county with 40% undivided interest, and my mother with an additional 20% undivided interest. Uh, in January, um, it seems like we came again and spoke, and in February, the county voted, uh, at the county office in February, uh, they voted to not condemn the property. This issue came up with the county, and they chose to not condemn it. Uh, my mother then filed a petition, uh, with David Day here in, uh, Coopville to, um, to partition the land, a motion to partition the land. And nothing came of that, um, no communication. I, I should back up and say that we have been trying to communicate with all. been trying to communicate with all of you. I've made emails and phone calls directly to several of you, and nobody will talk to us. And, and that occurred in December when we found out that the other heirs had purchased the property. Mother did not know what had happened to her property. She thought she had lost it, so she got an attorney to call, and I think he talked to Mike Myers or Jeff Jones, and he said, no, her property, she still had the 20%. But no one has ever given my mother the courtesy of communicating what you have been doing. No one has ever attempted to negotiate with her or to tell her what process was going on. We have found out everything indirectly. It's been a very cruel and abusive process. I have, at any rate, we, David Day, we, we changed attorneys, and then the second attorney that we changed said that he did not think that the city or the county would condemn the property, and that there was, and that they weren't going to partition, that it was going to go into negotiations. And I said, well, I don't need an attorney, and he was wanting 20% of this and 20% of that. And I said, well, there's no reason for me to have an attorney to negotiate the property. You know, we can negotiate it ourselves. And it sort of gave us, I mean, we became hopeful that maybe now you would start talking to us. If we dropped the partition suit, if we dropped the attorneys, if we dropped everything, then you would talk to us. And then, now this is what happens, a condemnation suit again. We're 11 months into this, and we've been trying to communicate with somebody, and you just won't communicate with us. I've provided the copies of this Senate Bill Number 3296, that it speaks about eminent domain, and it, I mean, you can read it, but it indicates, I was trying to find out what your justification would be to condemn this property legally. The only exception, I mean, it says that you cannot, whereas it is in intent of the General Assembly that private property shall not be condemned or taken through power of eminent domain by the state of Tennessee or any county, municipality, housing authority, industrial development board, or any other government subdivision or entity, or by any person authorized by the General Assembly, Assembly, to exercise the power of eminent domain unless in accordance with such provisions of the United States Constitution, the Tennessee Constitution, the provisions of this act. Now, therefore, then there's one section that says, public, page two, section one B, it says, "Public use shall not include either private use or benefit or the indirect public benefits resulting from private economic development and private commercial enterprise, including increased tax revenue and increased employment opportunities, except as follows." And the only one I could see that you could be possibly looking at is number five, saying, "The acquisition of property by a county, city, or town for an industrial park as authorized by Title 13, Chapter 16, Part 2." Is that, is that where you're coming from? I mean, I, I don't know what, what your justification legally is to, to pursue eminent domain.
Well, Ms. O, thank you for your comments, and I, I, I respect your opinion, and I'm very apologetic for the lack of communication. That was not the, not my understanding that that had happened, but I apologize for that. And if our attorney could address the issue of the eminent domain?
Sure. With this property, we already have four-fifths ownership along with the county, and there's one-fifth that remains. The proposal is to take the property for public use. If we're authorized by the council to initiate proceedings, the money would be paid into court. This nice lady would be able to withdraw her money from court without prejudice. Would be the same share that the other four heirs have already been paid. In that court proceeding, she could challenge and say it's not for public use, and that would be up to the court to decide. She could also, in that proceeding, ask for additional money be paid to her. She could also ask for negotiations through that process. But the key to it is, is once you initiate those proceedings, it gives the city the chance to acquire title to this property within 30 days, absent other directors of the court. So, it's the best procedure, in our opinion, legal opinion, to proceed to acquire the property. And all the negotiations and the challenges she has raised could certainly be raised in the court proceeding, and, and the judge could address those.
But sir, my concern was, it, it is, this property is zoned residential and commercial. Half of it is residential, half of it is commercial. It is not industrial. Nowhere has it been zoned industrial. It is not an industrial park. I mean, are you talking about condemning residential property for public use?
The property is zoned CI, commercial, industrial mix.
Half of it is, but half of it is residential. It is zoned industrial on the north side of Interstate 40, but not on the south side.
It is zoned commercial, industrial on the south side.
It is.
And quite frankly, from a legal perspective, I don't think it's in our best interest to debate the legalities that we would have to address in front of a court in a public proceeding today.
What I'm saying is, half of it is residential. And you're talking about condemning residential property. You're not talking about, you know, I mean, you were talking about zoning earlier. This property isn't zoned for this, what, half of this property isn't even zoned for this use.
The issue for the council is whether to leave it as is with a four-fifths interest and a one-fifth interest, or to proceed to have all the property owned by the public entities, and then any other issues could be hashed out by the judge in court. It's whether to leave the status quo or proceed forward.
I do have one question. Were, were you, was she not offered the same that all the others were offered?
I, she wasn't part of the negotiation process. I've been trying to explain that to her. She was never part of the negotiation process. Her other heir, the other family knew she was not interested in selling. They did not talk to her about it. I mean, she found out secondhand what, what had been done. I'm a realtor, so I can, I have access to tax information. We have not been communicated with, she has not been communicated with. Zilch.
We had a meeting recently with, with our attorneys, and I, I really understood the county's attorney to say that he had spoken directly with your mother, but now I could have misunderstood that, but.
He called her at one time and.
Well, I think, I think, under council's recommendation here, all these matters can be worked out through the negotiations, through the three terms in which he described earlier.
But we do not want to go, we would like to negotiate without going through condemnation. We see no reason to condemn the property simply to be able to talk to you and to go have to go through the courts. We have paid thousands of dollars already to attorneys and have still not talked to you. And now you're saying, here we can go through the courts again and through this process to talk to you. Why won't you talk to her? Why won't you negotiate with us?
Well, the answer to, the answer to the question is, once proceedings are started, she has 30 days to file a response. At any time, she can mail a letter to Mr. Shipley or.
That means we have to hire an attorney to respond. You're just saying, here we are again. We've already had three attorneys now, just to get the information that we got, to get as far as we've gotten. We've gotten nowhere.
Let me ask, Mayor of Council this. If, as far as negotiation, that's not what we can do. The question is, if she, if she accepts the same amount that the other parties accepted and turns over title, which is what we're trying to do with this proceeding, correct?
Yes.
Then would that end the matter?
Yes.
Is, are, are you willing to accept the same amount the others received?
We were not interested in selling. We were asking to partition the land. That was the, what we asked. We're not asking to accept, I, I don't, you know, we weren't part of that negotiation.
I don't think you need legal advice on this. I think it's just an issue for the council to vote to leave it status quo or to proceed forward.
Well, we would like, again, I'd like to request that you talk with us and negotiate with us and not go through the court system, so that we do not have to incur more legal fees.
Mayor and council, we'll be, we'll be glad to sit down and talk to her. Partitioning the land is, from the city and county standpoint, is going to be really tough to do.
Right.
We have, through negotiations, through her various attorneys, talked about partitioning part of the land off, and it, we just don't see any way that it'll work. We, we feel like we offered a, a fair price, paid more for that property than any of the other property that we purchased out there. But we'll, we'll be glad to sit down and talk before we file the partition papers.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Need to be standing in motion.
No.
Any further comments from the council? I know this is, this is not something any of us really enjoy doing. Eminent domain is not a, a fun thing, but.
It certainly isn't, but I, I would, I would like to have that authority and, but we will, of course, we always want to negotiate. I don't like to go to court anymore than anybody else does.
Absolutely. And hopefully, we can work something out to the betterment of everybody. Any other comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion indicate, but saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Shipley. Item 13, consider Resolution 071119, amending the Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual pertaining to Smoking in City-Owned Vehicles. Sponsor, Mr. Jim Burchett.
Mayor and council, the governor signed into law last May, the Tennessee, an amendment to the Tennessee Code Annotated, Title 39, Chapter 17, and Titles 50 and 38, to enact the Tennessee Non-Smoker Protection Act. Became effective October 1st of this year. To include vehicles, it was added vehicles as an example of enclosed spaces in which smoking is prohibited. The city has had a non-smoking policy in our buildings for several years, but we have not prohibited smoking in city-owned vehicles. We'd like to amend Chapter 5, Code of Conduct, Section 18 of the policy manual, to amend, amend it to add city vehicles and equipment with enclosed cabs as examples of enclosed spaces where smoking is prohibited in order to be in compliance with the act. The city manager actually sent a memo out last month, informing employees that we would now be prohibiting smoking in vehicles, and I recommend your approval.
Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
I move.
I have our motion and our second. Any discussion by the council?
And this includes all vehicles, no exceptions, correct?
Right.
Even motorcycles, right?
No.
It's not an enclosed.
It's not enclosed.
Kind of hard to do that.
I didn't know if there was like a bubble around a motorcycle, kind of five-foot invisible.
Maybe the helmet.
You can't smoke under your visor and your helmet.
That would be dumb. Any further comments by the council? We have our motion and our second. All those in favor of the motion indicate, but saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. Item 14, consider appointments to the Alcoholic Beverage Control Board. Sponsor, Ms. Kathy McLean.
Okay. Mayor and city council, we have two positions on the animal control board.
Alcohol.
I mean, alcoholic beverage control board, inspiring.
You got a one, one-track mind, you know?
Friday and slip.
And that's Beth Brown, agreed to serve another four-year term, and then Mr. Roger Colglazer has agreed to replace Diller-Dakis.
Do we have a motion?
Four-year term.
Thank you. Do we have a motion and a second to, to accept these?
No for approval.
Second. Motion and a second. All those, any comments? All those in favor of the motion indicate, but saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 15, consider reappointment to the Putnam County Rail Trail Authority. Sponsor, Mayor Sli. We had recently appointed Tom Williford to replace Dr. Sam Glasgow on the, sort of replace him. He's still on there as a different representative, I understand. He fulfilled that term and wants, would, would be willing to re, to re-serve again as another term, and we would, I would certainly like to nominate him for that position. Can we, do we need a motion and a second on that?
Yeah, why not?
Let's get a motion and a second to.
I move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those, any comments? All those in favor of the motion indicate, but saying aye?
Aye.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item 16, consider awarding bid for motorcycle emergency response equipment. Police Department. Sponsor, Chief Bob Terry.
Mayor and council, we recently advertised for bids for, to equip both motorcycles that we have with emergency equipment. We received one bid from Boswell-Hardley-Davidson. We'd recommend your approval.
Do we have a motion and a second?
No approval.
We have our motion and our second. Any comments from the council?
When are we expected to receive full, completed motorcycles? Do we know?
Probably within a month.
When the weather gets real cold.
By the time it gets cold. Pass out insulated underwear.
There will be non-smoking motorcycles, except for the exhaust pipe.
Will these be on the road all, all year long?
Well, who are the supervisors will dictate, you know, our, I mean, the, the days of operation.
And the idea would be it's all year long, though?
Yeah, it'd be, it will be year-round as the weather permits.
Right, okay. Any further comments by the council?
I have a question that has nothing to do with this.
Can I sit down?
No, it's for you. But while we were talking, I think it's very exciting to get these motorcycle policemen, but I also am interested in the policemen who are walking around. How's that going?
They've been patrolling it pretty regularly up there. They've been on the ground some. Obviously, when they get up there and there's nobody around.
Sure.
They don't stay. We talked about that again today. There was one episode that occurred a few days ago, where one of the officers up there found quite a bit of trash, and we didn't, we're not sure if somebody just chunked it out of their car, or if it was just left there by, by people in the area that were just hanging out. But so far, I guess a better indicator would be to ask the people that go to the church. I have had comments from some business owners up in that, that part of town, as well as people that go to church there, that say they're very appreciative of the effort.
Very good.
I know that was out of order, but.
We'll, we'll allow it this time.
Thank you.
And I really don't know about what happened at Tenth and Washington.
Can we, let's, let's finish off this motion here. Any further comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion indicate, but saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
At this time, we have a hearing of citizens and/or delegations, and we open up the floor to the council people. Anybody that'd like to make any comments. And we also open up the floor to our citizens, and you feel free to bring forth your ideas and, and comments about the city and things going on. We'd, we'd love to have you here.
Well, I noticed that the new sign looks like it's going to be coming in at, over the Drama Center, as I drove by today. That's exciting.
Very good. Any further comments?
I would, how's our gymnasium coming along?
It's on schedule to be finished by early to mid afternoon.
Very good.
I noticed Dozer and Traco at the park.
At the, at the gym.
What's the status on that?
Custom next to the job, but we need to even have close to a paint shop and hang it back there. We probably go ahead and move it there and save all.
So you're defrauding us by moving it over there, or?
Got me excited there.
It just tells you it's getting closer, though.
Getting closer.
It's getting closer. And Fairground Lane, I guess, moving right along?
Uh, it finished, burned the gas line installation on this segment of the job and starting the water line today, and we're moving through all three.
And Seventh Street looks good, and I'm grateful it's open again.
Yes.
If you want to think we made a, what kind of investment we made on that little house on the corner of Fairgrounds and, and South Walnut, just go by there and look at their front yard.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I noticed they were working, looked like installing some lighting there at the, at the intersection today, maybe.
Traffic signals.
Traffic signals.
Yay.
Any more hiccups on Seventh, our, our roundabout?
We got big orange barricades up there now.
Those are nice bushes. Those are bushes.
Yeah, they're planting strawberry today.
Yeah, looks good.
Yeah, that'll be good. Well, that'll be a new thing for, for us, but I think people will adjust to it. I know some friends I had living in Johnson City for a while, they have a lot of them in the neighborhoods there to slow people down, and they seem pretty effective, so. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll entertain, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Get out of here.